Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here for the March 26, 2024 Building Committee for the Hornet Building. It's not going to take a whole lot of time. I think we have a lighter event this afternoon. I think most of you know who each person is at this point. I'm going to turn it over to Helen and to Craig to kind of go through the packet that has prepared for us. I think overall, you're going to see some positive news that has come out recently in the last several hours. Specifically, the 75% estimate from DED. I think it needs to be aligned, but yeah, I don't want to steal the thunder from Helen. We'll talk about that. There's a few other topics that we do have to address. There's one agenda that we need to work with the trustees to vote on officially. We'll talk about it this afternoon. Again, overall, I think we're in a much better place than we've been at the beginning of the process, and I want to thank all of you who've been with, obviously, you've been telling me, right, for their leadership throughout this whole process. Helen, what are your views?
Sure. So, thunder stolen. The good news is that we are pretty much tracking even with our DD estimate, understanding that we also did roll in the radiant floor heat throughout the building. So, we, I just wrote down at DD, the estimated construction cost, and this is, we literally did get the estimate yesterday. We're still vetting it. I don't see any huge issues that'll move the needle too much one way or the other, but at DD, we were at $5,945,239. The summary sheet you have in front of you is indicating $5,931,343, so pretty much that even in a little rolling in the radiant floor heat, so that's...
When you say rolling it in, is not simply the plumbing and the slab that happened previously? This is the whole system?
Right, right. The system throughout the building, yes.
And this also includes some of the stipulations towards the EEA grants that you requested?
Exactly, yes. Some of the wood products that were requested by DCR and EEA, so that has been included as well. We only had a couple of alternates. We asked our estimator for information on relative to the finishing of the wood plant for the exterior of the building, which we need to evaluate a bit more, but otherwise we're doing pretty good about this estimate, which we called at the 75% construction dot in phase. So, that is the news. Craig can walk us through the overall budget and how this number plugs in. The other element that's worked with the district on is, not the district, the school, I think that's our, your own district, right? Tim, Andy, and others, was the development of what we need to do by mass general law and public procurement laws relative to proprietary procurement. We need to, as a matter of course, list three equivalent products, and then in situations where the awarding authorities feel that makes sense for them, a proprietary vote of the controlling body, in this case, the board of trustees, needs to be taken to say, we understand and there are the good reasons why we want to solely specify a product or a system. So, in your packet is a letter outlining sort of the rules and regulations associated with that, as well as a full list, six items that pretty much are ones that fit into your campus-wide system. So, for instance, the door hardware, let's skip the windows for a second, the security system, HVAC controls, and fire alarm system are all systems, brands, particular manufacturers that are established on campus and make sense to continue to tie into those. And then there are two on here that, you know, come from, I would say, one, the grant requirements through DCR or EEA, and that is the wood fiber insulation. That one was a specific request, a requirement grant to use timber HP wood fiber, I think Tom had mentioned a meeting or two ago. There are other headers out there, but they are in Austria, as local as Maine. So, for the purposes of the grant, obviously, first preference is Massachusetts, the regional works just as well. And then the other item is the exterior windows, and this is related to meeting the specialized code requirements. This is a window that we feel meets budget, but also all of the new energy code requirements that make more sense for this project. So, it's those six items that will be requested of the board of trustees for a vote.
I have a clarification. Alternative number one on your front budget, the 27, the, I'm sorry, alternative number two, the pre-prime siding, that is something that is going to be ordered to find from Massachusetts Mill.
Okay.
If it was field primed and free field painted, that is far more likely to be available.
Okay.
Pre-prime implies finger joint, it's usually from a mega mill in Canada or the Southeast East.
Okay.
I also was hoping to hear, as the radiant heat has been proposed for the slab, can you guide me to where the previous heating system is a deduction because we're no longer doing that? And so, where is that economization on the schedule here?
In the estimate, I don't think I do answer that question. I mean, in terms of trade-offs with components that may have been involved?
Yep.
I would have to get that to you.
Can you further elaborate, John?
Certainly. So, I can appreciate that there is some air conditioning desire for the building. Makes sense, offices in particular, potentially the simulator room is generating heat. And so, is there a more economical way to approach that? Perhaps by doing mini splits for air conditioning, design for air conditioning for those particular rooms? I also think that there's some merit to designing the building for future mini-split expansion, just putting portals, walls, sleeves, so that should the school wish to do a whole building PC, it could. But ultimately, if the heat to the building, which is the primary conditioning for the building, is coming from slab, it feels like the air source heat pump, ductwork and condensers and the electrical upgrades are economizations that can be witnessed in other places, notably in the surviving building.
Yeah, are there some trade-offs, Helen, right, in regards to now looking at the radiant heat source? I imagine you still need some of this HVAC. You would replace the ductwork for air exchange, meet codes.
Yeah.
But I think John's got a valid point. Is there possible savings?
I think...
Are you looking at the...
Another layer that I think would resonate well with EEA is there's a lot of desire for nature-based solutions. That's a catchy phrase, and I think that's merited. And I remember as a kid, if the house is hot, I was encouraged to open the windows to just be able to demonstrate that the building has airflow capacity. It's going to have chimonious doors on one side to ensure that the windows on the far side, the east side, are also able to open to just create a pathway for airflow. Whether it means that interior doors have bloopers on them or the default is open or something like that to ensure that the nature-based solutions for cooling the building are available. I think that would please EEA folks that are undoubtedly reviewing the...
Question or clarification, remind me what EEA stands for?
Sure. It's E O E A. It's Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. That is the umbrella organization for DEP, DOER, DCR. So, all of the agencies that govern our front business. Ultimately, the funds that were gifted to the school came from EEA.
We have a follow-up on it. Can I?
Can you tell me, forgive me, I'm bothering you again. What is the roofing material intended for? Do we have a furman? Is it a metal roof or shingle roof?
Shingle roof.
Okay. Is there, have we talked to solar installers to learn whether there's a preferred shingle or a preferred underlayment that we could design for now that would reduce the cost of solar later?
Well, certainly, the roof is designed structurally to accept DED. It's an requirement of the stretch code, of the specialized stretch code to be solar-ready. We have started some outreach through the city to see if there are any recommended PPA providers in the region that we should be keen to provide a roof plan and a person who's...
I can chime in. So, Carol Collins is the director of Kappa, which me is chief procurement officer and now part of. So, we have an arrangement, the city has an arrangement with Fippen Adams Solar, a vendor, and we're excited about a potential low or no-cost solution, once the building is complete, to install, to work with them to install an array.
To do PPA, yeah.
Yeah, PPA, yeah, yeah.
Yep, excellent.
So, it sounds like we have that arrangement at a few places. The senior center is one, and then I think three of the elementary schools.
Correct.
And so, we kind of duplicate that same type of arrangement, and it would be a, no, I was told, no cost. I was just told I could say that today. The question, the question Carol had was just if the estimated completion date of construction is still July 25. Is that...
June.
That's our hope, June 25? Okay.
But the array, if there is a desire for an array, it could be put as soon as the roof is finished. It doesn't need the sinks to be functional.
So, like substantial completions, potential?
Exterior completion, yeah. Because, and that's important because the smart program may change. It may change favorably or it may not, but be mindful of different tranches within the smart. There's some contingency that would be preferred.
Totally.
I think it's also worth being mindful in the design phase to see if there's a chase built in to carry the power to, from the roof to the main breaker panel, to just ensure that's built in, so it doesn't have to get built later.
I believe there's also the ability to exterior imagine.
Yep.
In a lot of split projects, given these basic constraints in some of those rooms, I think the quality of the roof is a bit less than...
Yep. Okay. Or space in the utility space for the panel.
Totally. If there's anything I can do to facilitate that conversation, whether it's with Fippen Adams, just making sure roof is constructed in such a manner that could accept these requirements, I'd be happy to help with that.
One thing I've seen before that I think has a lot of educational merit is to buy a flat-screen TV and to send it to a website that is a dashboard for the production of the roof array, and so it can show real-time progress. I think it's really virtuous, and you can also link that to the Smith website, so you can click on that to see just, you know, how much progress and potential and achievement that particular array has demonstrated.
Hello?
Yeah, pretty short money. I mean, to have a dashboard is not expensive.
Cool.
Question, Will. You mentioned the senior center, three elementary schools.
Yeah.
Have they been already installed or are you in the process?
They're already installed, so we're in the midst of like, I think it's a six-year lease, at the end of that six-year term, it's already paid off, and then the city starts generating electricity with those solar panels and stuff, so.
What's the life on panels these days?
You lose half a percent per year. A bigger expectation is warranting the inverter, because the inverter generally has a seven to 10-year lifespan, half or a third of panels are the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. No problem.
Are the schools buying the power off the roof through the PPA at the end of the six years, like the deal has been satisfied?
Correct, yeah. So, at the end of the six years, the city owns the solar panels and all the electricity that goes.
Excellent.
Who's the providers again?
Fippen Adams. They're a local provider.
Okay. I don't think we got that far in the information from the couple for Charlotte, so...
I couldn't remember if she replied on her email or not.
Okay.
I told her I'd ask her that question, so I'll let her...
Yeah, it stopped with the roof plan, so, okay.
I'll let her know June 25, and if there's a chance to start the solar installment before construction is 100% complete, we should talk about that.
They can certainly put it in queue with PISO, which wouldn't be important, because it's often a six-month plan.
Okay. Yes.
So, it's solar, that's something that's going on the roof?
It would have to be designed to support solar.
Right.
The decision has to be made. I think that is the ultimate goal.
I think it's a, no, in my opinion, if it's no cost and on seventh year, it provides all the optics and free power, it seems like a no-brainer.
It's not in the package currently, be after the fact.
Right.
But the conversation's going to be active, so we can move right forward with it, hopefully.
To help understand the alternates, is there a way we can move on with solar? What is the siding at this point?
Eastern white pine hardwood.
Hardwood, so like a shipyard oak, too?
I mean, vertical shipyard, sure, closely with Sean and Harry getting specific information, lots of recommendations for sources.
Is there, is the HP insulation going to be a continuous insulation on the siding?
Is that something that we're talking to by the...
Yeah, I'm just curious.
What the installation?
I'm curious whether, because I wouldn't think that we would need it, need a proprietary spec for the timber HP if it was just a cavity installation. We might just use cellulose for cavity installation.
Right, but the specific request was for that product by DCR?
So, I think if we own by DCR, because I would think that if we were...
DCR, yes.
Yeah. I don't know, but I would imagine that if we were just doing a cavity insulation, that cellulose would be locally available, cheaper, easier. If we're doing a continuous insulation, we're definitely going to go with the timber HP, so depending on the system.
Perhaps it could be a combination, too. Could be a continuous and then avoid it alone.
Sure. There should be cavity insulation no matter what.
Cellulose is cellulose. I mean, conventional cellulose is cotton generally with fire retardant, but I think that Sean was seeking a wood fiber, wood cellulose inspection.
So, is base bid for the wood siding to be unfinished?
Right now, yes, that's the number that's been added here.
That doesn't feel like the aesthetic that a school has, right? I mean, the other buildings are red, right?
Correct.
And so, unfinished must be finished, and so what would the ink and cost of that be to apples to apples? I feel like 50 grand is probably what it's going to cost.
Or, or does it go with those alone as a difference? That's a different deal, right?
All right. Now...
So, part of the 1.2 million for the state?
Yeah, I get that part.
Is this particular siding?
Yeah, I get that part. So, this wood is going to have a natural look currently in our, say, we went out to bid, and we move forward, right now it's going to be natural wood, and then these would, this would put a clear finish on it, the first alternate.
Right.
And then the other one would be potentially red to make it look like rest of the campus.
All right. The second one, to be clear, is pre-prime siding. It's not what the state is asking, but it's a painted.
Just clarified that earlier, I think, right, Helen? And, you know, we're getting this money from the state, and we've agreed to play ball, essentially, to garner these funds, so I think it's important that we continue to play ball the best we can.
The state wants the material, but I'm not sure that they care for the paint.
Yeah.
That's correct, and so this comes back to maintenance issue, right? You think that...
A third option would be a solid line stain.
That's what I would do for sure.
Good thought, Tom.
So, it's, yeah, solid red, it would blend in, the maintenance is...
Minimal.
Is minimal and easy when you need to do it, so.
And there's probably more money to come, so that's why I'd like to share that we want to play ball.
Yep.
You said solid.
Solid colored stain.
Yep.
It sucks into the material, like it's not so much a surface like a paint.
It's not going to peel.
It's not going to...
Yeah, there's no future scraping.
Yeah, we could do it on all six sides before it goes out. That would really make sense.
So, while you guys are on siding, can the school supply the white pine?
I'm actually thinking about that. Sean Mahoney was going to talk to him about that to see if you could do that from your forest. I talked to him last week about it.
So, that was on my agenda to break up.
Sorry.
Oh, very sorry. So, in trying to outline this 1.2 million and some of the stipulations, Sean threw out an idea that we hired a professional harvester. We do a demonstration after demonstration course to harvest several of our trees, and then mill them, dry them, and use them for the building project. Along with that, there were some other stipulations as far as national award programs that we submit to. There was going to be some tours from professionals afterwards. There was, if we harvest excess lumber, that we use that lumber within our carpentry or cabin-making programs. If there's excess lumber beyond that, the state would acquire that free of charge even if it's elsewhere. And all of that is under the jurisdiction of the GC that would be hired. This is a conversation I need to have with the board tonight. I think this is a huge undertaking and a demonstration course in how to respect the timeline that we have and how to respect for the GC, who hasn't been hired yet, to say, oh, by the way, you also have to oversee this particular project. I was reluctant, so I did ask the question to the EEA, asking, I need it. I can't make a decision within my own lane. I have to share this with the board this evening. What happens if the board says this is too much too soon? Do we lose the line? I need to have that, that question. And the question was, you're not doing the 1.2 million. What would happen was, Sean's calculations and his recommendations were, my question was the cost of hiring a professional to come in, where is that money coming from? He projected that that would have to come out of our budget, but there would be a cost savings on the back end since we're supplying our own lumber, so he almost had a wash in this. If we don't do the professional harvest, then we're simply buying lumber. Talking internally, my recommendation to the board tonight, I'll share with all of you, and we can debate it. Keep in mind, and let me sort of reference, if I need more money to come in, there's a second phase of this project at some point, someday, hopefully, okay, which is to continue the expansion of the building, to include the additional classroom, the headhouse, and the greenhouse. That is the ultimate goal. I think I shared with this committee, we talked to Sean, there might be an opportunity to apply conservation restriction on the demonstration course to prevent us from selling it off to a developer. We can maintain the use of the property that way, and it would be a monetary transaction to provide that restriction. Could that monetary transaction be used to then complete this project? I think that's a possibility, and having that conversation, knowing that maybe a second phase, I would be all open to the idea of doing the demonstration harvest at that point for that phase. So, that's where I'm at right now.
I'd like to see the general contractor stay out of the harvesting part of it. I think that we probably could get some equipment company to come in as a demonstration and to, whether it's John Yurkamatsu or Dunberg Row or somebody like that to come in and get some of the fellows that are licensed timber harvesters that are familiar with the state, to harvest a couple of trees, process them down, and then we can take them to the mills locally, and we can get them sold out. And I don't think that needs to come through the, any of the money from the...
I support Lenny in that. That said, the notion of like stump to wall is romantic and I think value-added, but we're estranged from it in our society, but it's not that hard. People do it for profit. And so, I think we're talking about probably a dozen trees, tops, and the concern about hiring a professional harvester is offset by saying, would you like to cut two dozen trees? And we just do it for nothing, and they would go, sounds good. So, I think it's unlikely that it'd be a cost burden, there would be a logistical, and foresters who might oversee it would work for a percent of the basal, and so again, at no cost. So, it wouldn't be, I think, particularly difficult, especially if the DCR was motivated to make that happen, because they're the ones who permit it, oversee it, and facilitate it. So, if we said, sounds good, but it can't delay anything, I think Sean would make it. That's my sense.
Folks, the project goes out to bid on Tuesday. This all has to be known. We can't put a bid of a project out and say, maybe the lumber is going to be provided to and maybe not. Can we continue this conversation for phase two? I love the idea. I think it's fantastic. If only DCR and EEA were involved in the fall when we were trying to talk to them. This is very late in the game. We don't know what to bid.
What if, what if it was bid for by the siding? Like, do it all, sort of the, to put up the siding?
Don't you have to dry the lumber, forest it?
Yep. That's not a big...
Dry it.
It's a couple weeks.
What's the timeline?
So, it all could be done by the timeline necessary, but I would say, what if it was bid as if you're procuring it? Make it just like it is.
Okay. And then be a change order for future...
Right, and a change order could be an economization, so I'm proposing.
That, that...
And so, let's, that's a motivation for the board.
Agreed, okay? And Helen's got a great point. We've got to get this out to bid. We can continue the conversation.
Absolutely.
We can go down the change order route, work out our details.
Put it out to bid, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I was asking more specifically for the interior, the shop space, you had like four-foot-tall walls or maybe shipyard.
Yep.
That's a smaller volume that students could easily get out of our woods guaranteed in the next month and have maybe an alumni slicing, we pay someone. We wouldn't need to include that in the bid. You could go out to bid.
We got some local shawners that would be more than happy to donate their time and equipment to mill it out.
We got it.
And we have a dry kiln involved.
Yeah.
All right. We've got to get it out to bid, all these are great ideas. We've got to create a laundry list of these ideas, and once we get somebody hired, get the conversation going.
Yep.
The GC doesn't have to worry about the harvesting part of it or procuring it.
I think get the bid and then talk change orders if there are conversations. I think that may be virtuous.
All right. Would it, can we do all that, but just look at me and James and say, we need X amount of work feet of lumber out of there, leave to us to get it done? Because we have past grads that do logging that would probably be willing to come in and help us do demonstrations. We have a father that's willing to come in and do a demonstration, so we'll just go ahead and start working on that. And if it doesn't get used, we'll just sell the lumber, relax. I mean, we can start that now.
Yes.
As a total separate part.
But if we could work with you on that to get an equipment company?
That'd be, that'd be great.
To bring this equipment in, this mechanized logging equipment, so that the students that are here now can touch it and feel it and see actually what's being done?
Yeah.
So, if we take a day to do that, I think it'd be great for the school, great publicity thing, too.
So, while you're moving forward, we can move forward with that.
Sure.
It's a totally separate thing.
Yep.
It's up to your boss.
Well, I know, that's why...
Yeah, I think we have to talk about it.
You were two paths, clerk of the works and circuit that, so he's taking...
And everything that comes down the pipe. And the guy that gets whipped and beat and kicked. Where's Joe tonight? He's up on the phone.
All right, okay. Let's move.
So, to continue on with what Helen was talking about with the budget, it puts our total project budget in good health, as we discussed last month, with the 1.2 million coming from the EEA. We have a budget that's still fairly balanced, and again, depending on if we take an alternate or not, that may change slightly, but...
All right, I'm sorry. I got a question before you pick the role in there, Craig. Looking at these professional fees, there's no money allotted commissioning. Field is such a simplified system in this building, nothing's really overcomplicated. You shouldn't need permissioning, and we're going to be at the mercy of the MEP contractors, that everything's going to be up to stop.
We did talk about commissioning first, whether it was required by city, which it's not, however, it is the practice. We will probably, and this is something Helen talked about in the specifications, have a more enhanced startup and turnover from the MEPs that will have a much more robust spec, so it won't be just your... So it won't be just your standard testing and balancing and turnover, there'll be a commissioning component to that. But we won't have a commissioning agent on from start, which would have been already in play if we, if we followed the model. So we won't do a level of commissioning.
All right, thank you. All right, go ahead, sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. So, as I said, from last month to this month, we very much stay in the same realm, we're, we're at a balanced budget, we have just enough money to complete the project based on the current estimate. We may have some extra money to work with, pending a, a favorable, favorable bid, at that point, we'll have some discussions, but right now, I feel like we have a responsible number to move forward with. This project includes the soft costs, the budget, soft cost contingency right now, we're holding five percent. And we have, the typical insurances, advertising and printing and other consultant fees that we've either paid for or will pay for going forward.
All right, wait, hold on, why's builder's risk in this analysis, should that be carried in the G C bid?
It can be done both ways.
So is it identified clearly in the bid documents?
It will be, yes.
Double up.
We save the markup to a point, and typically the builder's risk policies from the G Cs can be a little slanted towards the G C, so buying a policy directly from your polit, your agent may be more advantageous for the school.
Would that be through the city, well?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Do you, do you-
I don't know the threshold.
Promote this approach?
I mean, we should definitely have, I'm, I'm almost 100% sure we need a builder's risk policy.
Well, yes, I agree with that.
Right, right. So I think I should consult with Maya, there are, there are insurers, the city is the Mass Interlocal Insurance Association, most municipalities in the state are a member of theirs. Anyway, yeah, they're pretty helpful, so I'm happy to kind of summarize what we need. I'm very confident in saying that this building cost exceeds all the thresholds that would require a builder's risk policy, so I could work with Craig and Helen to make sure that we get a quote at least.
I could get a firm price if that would help.
First of all, I had done an earlier evaluation and got basically an order magnitude quote, so $10,000 came from that exercise.
All right.
To talk about the schedule in a little more detail, as Helen mentioned, we're fast and furious trying to get this on the street. So, we are tonight getting hopefully approval of 75% C D set that is available. 100% CDs will be ready by April 2nd, and those are your bidding documents, basically. Bidding will take place with filed sub bids as well as the prime G C between April 3rd and May 13th. And the bid, very close, and this might have to adjust slightly, but right now we're assuming the next Board of Trustees meeting on May 14th will be when you approve the bid for the project. Contract award will then take place shortly after that, 15th, and then construction on the ground, boots on the ground will be starting June 20th. Questions on the schedule? Last time we reported that we did pre-qualify or in the process of pre-qualifying G Cs for this project. In the first round, we did qualify T A Sullivan and Western Builders. The third was disqualified for scoring and submission items that were missing. So we decided to put it back out bid, or sorry, back out to the statement of qualifications. Those are now due tomorrow. We're expecting two at this point in time, we've been given verification two will be submitting, so we have the potential of having four pre-qualified bidders at the end of this?
Can you share the names of those two potentials?
I cannot until they've submitted.
Okay.
On that time, what, you have, on here you say, construction begins June 20th, but on here you're saying it begins June 20th.
Well, you sign a contract on May 15th, you've got cementals, you've got permitting, it's at least 30 days before you start construction.
Okay, I'll just go with what you have.
Uh, the design master schedule?
You've got kickoff May 20th.
Kickoff meeting, if required, it can happen, it would be prior to construction, but actually boots on the ground is different.
Two months later, then 30 days.
Yeah.
Is there any concern that this would trigger MEPA? Or it's not financially tall enough? It's on the, the Ager's one, okay.
Okay, what was your correct question, John?
Well, this would trigger MEPA, which is a much deeper dive, messes in front of a policy act review.
I guess we should also say that successfully you have a site plan review last week, as I asked them, so we made it through, through our city boards.
Can you clarify, I'm going back now. So, if the bid is going, is going to be, there's going to be a price attached shortly going out to bid. Are the bidders going to be bidding on a complete air source heat pump system for the building? Doesn't that feel like redundancy and extra cost? Why are we bidding, why are we asking for that to be bid on?
I don't think we have time to change it, John, this morning.
Okay, will that be a change order at some point?
We'd have to create our laundry list of all these things we've got to work out.
Okay.
We need to get it out to bid, get a contractor on board. Guess we're not going to get dollar for dollar unfortunately in a change order, but that's, the cards were being dealt with.
Okay, no, I don't think that we should delay any.
Have them, they've been fully designed at this stage. Can we see them?
I'm going to share the, yeah, sure the documents are more developed than what the estimators asked.
Jim, take a look at them.
Share the documents.
So now we did, we obviously built a hurdle of complaining. About a week ago, the city mayor presented to the city council the capital improvement projects for the city. We'll kick into the details, nothing official, but there is positive news, I believe, for the project as well, so. Specifically talking about generator and service dealing.
Wouldn't be necessary, yeah. Maybe they can reappropriate those funds if, if unnecessary. Okay.
That's it.
All right.
Well, can we get our contextuals?
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide a link to the bid docs.
And you can at this point?
We can give it to you now, if you wait till Tuesday, it'll be what we call 100%.
Well, we're not going to make any changes, no matter what we discuss.
Yeah, so I, I would suggest you wait till we-
We're going to have to deal with it down the road.
Yeah, yeah.
So I wouldn't recommend that, wait until the third, fully.
If you share the link out on Tuesday, I could have them send it out to you.
Jim, you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, working on them and-
Yeah, I mean, if you see something, obviously there's a typical redundant period of things.
Exactly.
We just, it needs to be dealt with, the specific-
What you, what you've got for 100%?
I have a naive question about big picture, if we're going to do phase two, is this, I know it sounds very condescending, is this building situated so that phase two, there's room for it? Okay, okay, good. Just want to make sure that that was like a possible answer in the corner.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's come up with the planning design, you know, everybody images down the line and planning for inverts and upper graphic slope, and it's not 100% figured out, and there will need to be equipment that has to be moved. Shouldn't we be so lucky as to do phase two versus where it was?
Those, those words aren't in our vocabulary, there's so much, phase two's going to have to happen, they just happen.
Awesome. I think we all know a lot more now about potential sources.
Yeah, no, this is great, thank you everybody that participated. Now, in terms of future meanings, I think we still need you, this committee, to work out this one request in terms of changes, potential changes down the road. Anybody got any thoughts?
I think it's a good idea, in particular, I'd like the design to go to solar folks that can begin their process, because it can take them a while. They just need to know the orientation, slope, and scale, and I think that would really be a lovely design, okay, to have solar on the roof as soon as possible, in a sense.
Getting into the weeds a bit here, but filed sub bidding starts for three, do you think your addendum for filed sub bids would go out for 10, like a week after?
Yeah, we really need to outrun the micro schedule.
So if Jim has, something really catches his eye, April 10th, and then, yeah, a week later, so like for 31-ish for, for overall G C, I would think.
Can you say that again? So, so finish mechanical, go to sub bids by 4:31?
So they're going to put the whole package out to their pre-qualified G Cs, the G C is going to send it out to, no, these are filed sub bidders, sorry.
They go first.
So, so sub bidders are going to get the documents, they're going to put in questions, first of all, if they have any, and we will, Helen, we'll release a, an addendum which will answer their questions so that everybody has the same information. If there were a change, if Jim said, hey, I want five weeks on three, that would be the time that we would also say we want five, not three.
Because the number is still not.
And so then, so that's about, so I think the, the filed sub bids are looking at drawings for about two weeks, so that means they get their questions answered in one week, and then they have another week to incorporate that into their final number, which they're delivering on 4/20.
So we will meet again before that happens?
No. Our next meeting penciled in for May 14th.
Not April.
The other, I mean, if you want a meeting in April, board's meeting on April 9th.
We should have a meeting. I, I hope we should have a meeting.
Let's keep this train rolling.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Okay, it's fine. It's the date.
You know, I'm just wondering, is it possible to get the 75% again now? That way, if I really see something glaring to the V and W engineer, whatever, I'd rather bring it up now, and maybe gives us that week or 10 days to see something that we have to tweak it.
I was just asking that anyone who receives that link, keep the link to themselves, not sharing it with any public court.
So, how are we going to handle getting this link to Mr. Moran?
I'm waiting to send it to Andy, and Andy will send it to them.
Andy, bang down eventually, there was a link to a folder.
Pull it out and I'll share it with you. There's no access right to it, right, I share that link?
Correct, yeah, anyway. Yes, please funnel long questions to Andy, your comments.
What do you think Oliver Smith would think now, 1844?
Doing all the job.
I think he thinks things are expensive.
As you look at a sticker on a car and what you purchased, when my father was a Hudson dealer, he used to talk about the cost, I don't know if you, and say, if you say it fast, it doesn't hurt.
I'll try that next time.
Yes. You have a question number?
And, oh, I like you two, okay, you're the experts.
He's the wood utilization forester for the-
Way more about this than I do.
Yep.
That's why we brought you on court.
Oh, thank you. For what it's worth, there was conferences past week at UMass Amherst at the Overbuilding, which is the C L T building, and-
Yeah, tell me you were there, I worked over there.
I was speaking.
Go on, and I was supposed to be there.
No, no, at the conference. Yeah, anyway, they were really dragging.